Anyone? So, this night the agenda is. Applications and public hearings, we have planning board twenty-four dash zero seventeen, which is a multi-tenant application. Grayson Boloski, I think it is, yeah, Boloski submitted a multi-tenant application to lease an existing unit. At the multi-tenant commercial building located at two South Winchester Street. Grayson is using the space to store material for his floor sanding and installation, uh insulation services, along with one office. Subject property is shown in tax map one oh nine lot two and is in the village business district two. Item B under applications is planning board twenty-four dash zero one eight, and that's another multi-tenant application. Suzanne Boyzver has submitted a multi-tenant application to lease an existing unit in the multi-tenant commercial building. Located at two South Winchester Street. Better You Beauty LLC is a personal service business that offers laser skin treat treatments. Botox, fillers, help and skincare products. Subject property is shown at tax map one oh nine lot two and is in the village business district two. And under discussions and other businesses, planning board schedule, there are changes in November, December. Site plan modification, continue a discussion on a modification, um. Actually, application. And definitions contractor bay and others. And item D, Jim Fennell, new indoor athletic facility and any other business as may be required. Stack up to the top, um there. I guess we would need a region impact vote here, are there new items on there?
I don't think there is a.
Motion by Michael York that there is no, uh, reason to. Alert surrounding towns for regional impact, is there a second?
Second.
Second about Mark's hilarious, are there any more discussion? And all those favorite indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And we have the minutes of August eighth, twenty twenty-four to review. Is there a motion to? Approve those minutes?
Okay, the motion.
Motion by Brandon to approve the minutes of August eighth. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Richard, is there any further discussions or changes or? Anything like that? And all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And we have that, you're saying you weren't there, okay, set that up. And brings us to our first application, which is the multi-tenant application. As Grayson Boloski has submitted the multi-tenant application to lease an existing unit in the multi-tenant commercial building. Located at two South Winchester Street. The space is using, uh, to store material for his floor sanding and insulation businesses, along with, uh, an office. Subject property is shown at tax map one oh nine lot two and is in the village business district two. So, this is the one. Where staff has said that it requires a special exception because of the zoning change that they last year there.
Sure.
In, in staff's opinion, uh, I think we should just look at that for a minute and discuss it.
If you, you agree, then you can't. You can still hear the application.
They're already scheduled.
Exactly.
For a ZVA anyways, so.
Yeah, so there are.
Well, they have not.
They had been directed.
Okay, and they can still make it.
They can, definitely. How could we? Because you, you could have been told the condition of the special.
Yeah.
It's just a bit, it's not your.
See. Village Business District, that's on page thirty-two. Our ordinance. And this falls under. Special exception. Which is. Wholesale warehouse and storage facilities, is that correct when you're?
In my opinion, it's the best fit, uh, for specific use.
And, and that is probably because he's going to be storing his materials now.
Correct.
And the reason I don't agree with that is because. He, he's a small business, just like any other small business carpenter, plumber, electrician, they're always going to store. Their material, supplies, their tools and stuff in, you know, where they're working out. They not necessarily will be working in that building with it, but they'll be storing that stuff there. And I just don't know if we should classify that as warehouse. Under, in allowable uses, there's personal service shop or service establishment, can you? And I would think that this is a service establishment, because they conduct a service. Like a plumber or like, um, repair person or something like that.
That's, that's, we've got to address that because I think some members of the board think that personal services, you know, care less.
Well, it's, it is, our definition, it is, but it says or service establishments, that covers other things other than personal service. That's what that was put in there.
But not a professional business or corporate office, because.
Um, not really, because a professional, I think we've usually done them as lawyers, accountants and things like that. Uh, but I don't.
I think, I think I'm happy to discuss service establishment, um, since it went along with personal service shop. I was thinking the same, uh, and it's not defined there, you know, it's, and so. It's something that we can definitely discuss.
And, and I think it's.
When we do our definitions, type to figure that out, we're going to keep any other cases.
So I don't think it falls under D and a special exception, which says wholesale warehouse or storage facilities with us. This isn't a storage or warehousing facility, it's a guy running a business who's storing his equipment and. Product for the business there, I don't think it fits that, I think it fits service establishment. So we need to discuss that before we go further on this, so. I can just call the board members, uh, Richard, what do you think?
Just trying to, just like.
Sorry, yeah, well, let's discuss that, I, I was hoping Grayson would be here to explain this. What are they going to do? Well, this is pretty much in general too, because this board has, you know, we have approved other businesses. In place of that, that work out of a, a space and they have their tools up there, but go somewhere else to work. And we have a class of, that I don't think has a storage facility, even though they're storing their equipment there, it's not a storage facility where their business is storing.
I agree.
What did you do with the? This is the cross from waste management. I remember they had the existing house and they built. Put up a, that, they were storing. Uh, products. Yeah.
It was a cleaning service, oh yeah, cleaning service, yeah. That's right, that, that did that. Um, I don't recall what we classified it as, if we had done it under the whole warehousing thing, uh. We didn't make it a special exception for now, because. As, well, the service business, as well. It would be classified as a service business or a service enterprise, as we had in our establishment better, as we had in our zoning here.
The, the, to what extent are we going to allow? Things, you know, stored or.
Well, here's, here's the difference, because again, in your zone on there, it's personal service shop or service establishment. Which covers a broad range of service businesses. And then in special exception. Uh, we have a wholesale warehouse of storage facility, well, that is their business, it's a store, if they're a business, they aren't. Working out of there, taking this stuff out onto a job site, bringing it back and putting it there, this is a storage facility where their rental space is storing piece stuff or. Equipment or something like that, so they're two different classifications there. It's in special exception, there's a storage or a warehouse facility. Is a lot more of a, a thing than just a service establishment, so that's why it's a special exception. And not in the cloud ways.
So, is it the question of the good scale?
It's, it's, I think it's a question of what the business is, this guy has been running a storage facility, but it sounds like he's running a service establishment that he's, so floors it. And I guess they put any floors.
This is why I've come here before, and so, yeah, so.
He's storing floor. That's all the benefit.
Yeah, and which he should be allowed to, where else can he put it, working on there? And, and he's not storing it for somebody else. You know, he's storing it for himself, his own use in his business, it's not a storage facility where he's going to rent out. Uh, you know, somebody's storing a, a vehicle once and it's flooring because he's renting and storing his house with a bunch of good people.
He's basically staging what he needs to do a job.
Yeah, and as any business like that needs, they need a place undercover with this.
So he doesn't stay there for.
Well, and say it until it uses it, right, but he hasn't been paid.
They, they just stayed there by the month, by the year.
Oh yeah, and being paid month after month, no, there's no, yeah, that's the difference between these two businesses, there are these two classifications. And if we look at those differences between the classifications. This service business falls more under the service and establishment rather than a warehouse facility, is what I'm saying here. And I'm asking the board if that's what they agree, or if they're going to have to go with a special exception under warehousing and storage facility. But I don't think they should have to.
How is this different based what they're trying to do at the base?
Um, because that's an actual. Storage type unit that they want to put up, they were, they went in but under the storage, and that.
Yeah, and that's where we're coming to problem, correct?
Uh, ran into a problem because.
Nothing, nothing.
Definition, yeah, nothing, they're playing, but. But again, that was. Those are contract bay, which again, this would be something like that, had they gone under this. Classification, perhaps, if that went into business, I'm not sure, but.
We do have Grayson's.
We have Grayson's. Oh, we don't, we don't, well, we aren't discussing, no, this is a, we're discussing. So. We need to nail down if we're going to call this a warehouse facility or a service establishment.
I still think it's a question of scale, I think that he was laying in, you know, multiple houses, where the floor is, uh. You know, a commercial building, and then there's a pile, that would be, you know, a warehouse. In anticipation of jobs, whereas we're, we're presuming.
That in that case, would every single business that comes in here be classified that? Because any business is going to have interiors for whatever they have.
Right, that's true, so, you know, in our heads, we have a nice view of what the scale is, if this is a smaller operation, it's probably, probably only. Laying in as much, you know, storage.
We'll find out, yeah, I want to think. And it's to us.
To our ultimate decision, you know, we manage this.
I, I still want to see the definition somewhere, um, I will say, this, this building is less than two thousand square feet. And he's only using a portion of that interior, just sort of, so, again, this is why. This is why I wrote it.
And we look at it and just see. Storage for a singular project.
We don't have that classification in our zone, you know, we have specific classifications there.
Yeah, no, but I mean. And how we interpret this.
Which, yeah, so let's give you the thing, yeah, it's for his own business, correct, it would be for a multiple business, that's just his own business.
Or multiple projects where he would be storing. You know, say he's got four buildings or four things going at once.
Mm-hmm.
Then it becomes a warehouse, if he's doing a singular.
Well, he's only got like two thousand.
I, I understand, but what I'm looking at is, okay, we can say. Okay, for this, he's only got two thousand square feet, we don't put a limit on him, or.
Well, if he wants to expand that two thousand square feet, that end here. And then if it expands to something that is warehousing stuff, then. He has to go to the ZVA. But that's the planning board determines, that's what they're doing now, and it's, planning board does determine things like that, to. Clarify, that's over. What do you say, Eric? Is it a service establishment or is this business a wholesale warehouse or storage facility with us?
I don't see, I don't see where's a wholesale, because it's.
Or, or warehouse, it didn't have to be wholesale, wholesale or warehouse, storage, storage facility, is it a facility or is it an establishment? I guess maybe that's the difference, or if you want to think about it, I'll move on down. But, uh, I can't ask anything, you're not seated. Okay.
I don't, for these purposes, so to call the service.
Service establishment, yeah. Okay. Service establishment. Charles.
I'm very smart with the word service establishment.
Scott, service establishment. Service establishment, okay.
With the provision that we can. Come to the review of this.
Oh, the, we're going to be doing that in September. Okay, so now in the belong to the application there, um. Again, it's a multi-tenant, uh, tenant application, sorry, uh, Grayson Boloski. Has submitted a multi-tenant application to lease an existing unit in a multi-tenant commercial building located at two South Winchester Street. Grayson is using the space to store material for his floor sanding and installation bit, uh, services, along with one office. And the property is shown in tax map one oh nine lot two, which is in the village business district two. And I understand that they aren't here tonight, they're on Zoom tonight, is that correct?
Grayson is here.
Would you like to present anything to the board, uh? Any clarification, anything like that, you know, we have what you're doing here, so.
Um, no sir, as, as long as everybody is happy, um, I, I think we're all set.
Just give us a brief synopsis of your business.
Um, basically, you know, I, I work onsite, I go to and from site, um. I do multiple jobs a week, um, roughly four to five, I'd say. Um, so, we do a lot of floor installing, everything like that. Um, so it's a lot of, it's different every day, really, it's, um, it all depends on from house to house and. Um, every different situation.
So, you refinish floors as well as install floors?
Yes, sir.
Right. And any questions from the board members, uh, to the app?
Um, no sir.
No, no, I'm, I'm asking our board members if they have any questions.
Okay. Sorry.
Bear with us there, uh, any board members have any questions about your business there?
Hazardous interiors.
That's what I was saying.
Yeah, uh, the types of slacks or any types of, of.
Stripping agents.
Stripping agents, are you going to make that out of those stored and, and or. Uh, do you bring them to, back to your warehouse?
Um, we only use, we only use, um, oil-based polyurethane. Um, that's really the only product, um, we use. Um, other than that, it's all just the hardwood flooring, um, and the other machinery. Um, as far as like sanding goes. Um. But other than that, um, it's all sandpaper, um. Air tools, stuff like that.
Okay, so probably part of any, any.
And I was going to say, and, s- sorry to interrupt. Um, I was going to say, and. Any of the polyurethane is all stored in the metal cans, and then it's all used on-site.
Okay, so, part of any approval would be an inspection by the fire department, as well as code enforcement, the fire department as well.
Okay.
Okay. And I understand this is the toupee, the old, I mean toupee garage, the old, uh, service station there.
Correct.
I think is what you're using there, none of the rest of the other mill building, correct?
No, just, ju- just the part of the building that's disconnected from the mill.
Yeah, it's a separate, it stands alone from the.
Correct, sir.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, any other questions from the board? Nope. Then, again, any from the publics, or, yeah, any, any others here, any questions from the public on this one? No. Not facing you, so I didn't see anything, I'm looking this way here, okay, so. I guess an emotion would be in order?
I think the motion.
And, okay, the motion would be. To, to approve the multi-tenant application, uh, and with the, uh, inspection by code enforcement and the fire department, okay? And who would second that?
What?
Second.
Second by Charlie, is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye, aye, all opposed? Okay, you're good to go, and you'll have to contact the, uh, code enforcement officer, and you'll be set up for an inspection.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Yeah, good luck.
Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you. Okay, item B, that is planning board twenty-four dash zero one eight, that's another multi-tenant application. Suzanne Boy, Boyzver, I think it is, has submitted a multi-tenant application to lease an existing unit. In the multi-tenant commercial building located at two South, South Winchester Street. Better You Beauty LLC is a personal service of businesses, a business that offers laser skin treatments, botox, fillers, health and skincare products. And the property is shown at tax map one oh nine lot two, and it too is in the village business district two. And is the applicant here? Yeah, okay, that's you, okay, uh, just give us a, a brief description of, of what you're doing there? And, and just tell us whereabouts in the, about in the mill building you'll be.
So we walk in the town hall and take a left and it's suite B. It's a small room, it's a hundred and forty-four square feet. And I'm just going to be having, um, an aesthetic chair and, um. My lasers and a few tables and, and a chair. So the patients will come in and they'll be on the chair, I can do treatments to them if they have broken blood vessels or age spots or. They want to get a tattoo removed or something of that nature. Also, we can do some enhancements where we're doing neurotoxins and that helps to freeze. Like, um, wrinkles from happening, um, things of that nature, um. I plan on being the only one right now, I didn't, I just wrote that on the application, I don't know if I have another nurse come in. If I could ask him now if I can just have that as a future, or do I have to come back?
And have, what does that mean as?
If I had another.
Employees you're talking about?
Yes, if someone came to help me or something.
And you have full-time employees wanting that, would be really good.
Yeah, I'm really not going to be full-time, to be honest, but I just figured up with that, but, um, I'm just going to be by appointment. I wanted to be vague about, about the schedule, because I really don't know if someone's going to call me and say, can I meet you on Sunday at one or. You know, it's really going to be by appointment only, um, just probably a few people a day, I'm not quite sure yet. But, um, I just wanted to leave it like from nine to seven.
Yeah, and covers it all.
Just as a big, you know, window to work within.
And the entrance, the mill entrance you're talking about is warehouse, is that the one right off of the small parking lot, and where's that one?
It's the, uh, office building.
Oh, the office building, okay, okay, yeah, it's that building. I got you now, because I was a little confused, so I thought you were describing getting into the rest of the mill there.
Oh, no, no, it's.
Yeah, okay. Let's see, and any questions from the board?
Um, should it be encouraged to increase your number of employees to two just this?
Sure.
Probably be a good idea, yeah, that'd be a good idea.
Can I have you mark that, or should I just?
Well, we'll mark it down, but you could initial.
Okay.
Stop by the town, uh, town hall and initial it.
Just in case, yeah.
Okay.
And then am I limited to what I can do, or is it just within my scope of practice? Like, some of my counterparts might do, um, IV hydration or things, all within the scope of my license, but. Um, is that okay?
I would say so, within the scope of your license it is.
Okay, I just wasn't sure, this is what I'm starting with and you just don't know where things could take you, and I wanted to be. Clear that I, with you guys about what I can and cannot do.
Okay, yeah, we don't. Limit that part of it.
Okay.
But if you're in, if you're expanding the business at all, we'll be.
Very good, okay, that's great, thanks for answering that.
Questions from the board? Question from the public? I guess a motion would be in order, so probably also an inspection by the code enforcement. To approve the multi-tenant application, is there a second? Also, uh, did that motion have the condition to?
Yes.
Be, you know, swept out by a code enforcement and the fire department?
Yes.
Good. Okay, second, okay, second by Brandon, is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye, all opposed, all opposed. Good luck.
Thank you, so what, what's the condition that?
The condition is just to have code enforcement, have an inspection and the fire department. That's generally, that is, that happens anyway.
Okay, then we'll just do that.
And you saw this, and you'll see Mike Jaz and the code enforcement guy, and he'll set you up probably with an section and fire department.
And I'll show that back to you, it's, okay, thanks, I'll see you.
Okay, you're welcome. Yeah, let's see, let's go through. Yes. You know, it does not make a special exception. Uh, in our, but we don't. But we don't make that call, I mean, yeah, it, it's the board's opinion that it falls under the service establishment and not the other. So, yeah, it would be our opinion that. Yes, yeah. Well, thanks for clarifying that, yeah, good to have you, and then something like that. I want to get my papers in order here, so, yes, we have, uh. Jim Fennell is here to, for a new indoor housing facility, that item D, and then number six. So let's just move that up to the next, next area business, we'll do the planning work stuff after that. So, it's Jim, Jim Fennell here. Yeah, how are you? So. What are you doing, you're, you're looking to move out of the mill or that?
No. Uh, just if anybody doesn't know, I run the field house, whole, uh, seems like everybody's.
Yeah, that's.
But, so, we're in the warehouse portion. Uh, we did, we're coming up on this year. And we have approximately thirty-two thousand square foot facility, uh, we have about twenty-two thousand square feet of it, ten thousand square feet. It rented out by an organization called June Swampats, which had a bad, it's. Our area has a turf field and a basketball court, our multi-purpose court. And we have a little bit of a lounge area that we serve, uh, traffic and stuff like that. And awkward, so, I don't know if anybody's been there, uh, but it's great, uh, we've grown since. Uh. We started COVID, October of twenty twenty, not, you know, it's kind of crazy, some. But it's grown, we really haven't done a lot of advocating, it's just been word of mouth. And we're at the point now, uh, where it's made an impact on our community, it's been great, uh, I think, I, I think. Uh, I'd like to introduce you to Sean Boizzi and Mitch Lee. They both have been involved, not in, in the field house, in the operation of it, but as participants, as parents. And, uh, of being in it, and so, over the years, they've come and taught, and they said, we should expand, we should add this, and I was like. Talk, I don't think we're, we're going to be ready to. Uh, but now we're at the point where we are, I, I can tell you that we, we're, we're booking rentals. Usually it's, you'd call that, we, yeah, we can say, we can go months ahead, now it's hard, getting space, I used to give away. Like, we have run a lot of YouTube, uh, for soccer especially, so you run a lot of soccer leagues, we run the double coed soccer league, women's league. We run lacrosse leagues, and people would say, hey, can we get some practice, and I used to just give them. And now, because we have so much in there, we, we have Rob, who's coming in, we have youth lacrosse coming in. So, it, it's, it's been good, uh, but what it adds in, uh, is people always have ideas, right? We do have a lot, and people like to sit and drink and have a couple, they, they share their ideas, everybody's got a great idea, right? We don't have the space, and my whole thing was, we don't have the space, a golf, so, uh, rock, you, thousands, whatever it may be. There's a lot of things for this community to have, we would like to serve it for them, but we don't have it. That's where Sean moved in, Sean was one of the owners of the tire warehouse facility that's down Route ten, uh, and we started.
Excuse me, could I name his last name again, please?
Boizzi, it's B O I.
Yes.
At the I N.
Thank you.
So, Sean is involved in that, so we started talking about, okay, what would we do that is as. A complimentary facility, you know, standing on, uh, I will tell you that, and what, looked at different towns. My experience with dealing with the town sponsor has been really positive, you know, from, from, from everybody that's been dealing. And the location's great, and especially to us, the Route ten location is, is, is good. But anywhere in Swanson is pretty good, because you draw from, we, we draw our bases, Vermont. Massachusetts, that Northfield, Burnston, down to Greenfield area, Vermont, anywhere from Brownell, you know, upwards of Springfield, Vermont. And then we'll go up into Charleston, and then not much to the east, believe it or not, I mean, we don't, some people are on, we start looking toward Manchester and Concord and places like that. So we kind of get that, we've carved out our little area, and. So, we look, so, so Swanson's a good location for it. So, and it's not that far from Keen, Keen, Keen people like, look at that, you know, it's not in Keen, we found that that's not the truth. So, we, 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 this, that, we've worked out with us, uh. Sean can tell you a little bit more about space at, at, at tire warehouse, it's. It, it, it fits up, we want to add on to a building and to, 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 to expand, like I said, there are different things that we want to do. In addition to what we're already doing at, at, at the mill. And, but he's, that, that's moved for sale, and, and it may, it might not be available to us. So what we're just trying to do is, this is an informal conversation, just to find out, A, and Adam answered our question. What we want to do falls within what the zone over there. But we also want, you know, because of our way to the town, so what we would like to do is steal you guys out. I mean, as a planning board, I mean, I think we add to the economy, I think we add to the community, and we like keep that. So if there is anything that, that ideas, we're coming to you guys for ideas. If there's a piece of land, if there's any existing structure, if, if, because of tire warehouse. Gets sold, and, and Sean, again, can speak a little bit more upon that, if it gets, then we might be looking for something. We are quite content to go along with what we are at, at, at the mill right now. But there's a lot of opportunity to expand, a lot more to do for the future. So that's, that's basically what we're looking for.
Coming to us for ideas as to where else you could expand?
Yeah, yeah, basically, when it comes down to it, yeah.
Not real estate agents?
I understand, but for details really, but it also, it also got pieces of land that is coming from Boston into town. And it might be, whatever.
So.
So, you're just, we're just putting the fields out there, and, 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 and understanding we're coming with planning board because. We're, pretty much, we're asking for small one, we've been out of town a bit, we want to walk on the cat here.
But the idea. The idea exists here, right? I mean, yeah, that's the idea that you're, you're selling, but it's already sold to us because you're.
That's exactly it.
But you're saying so more, but you're saying that you may be interested in building your own building at some point, or no?
Yes, yeah, in, in, in addition to what we're gonna do. Because like I say, like, sort of, and, and other, other things exist in there. And it's not concrete, don't like this, this is for, but also. There's a lot of people that come in, they have, they drop off their kids, and they sit around, and they watch them, and they play. And they'd be like, that would be great to have golf somewhere later right now, and I could go swing some balls. While my kids are at soccer practice, or they're playing a game, or they're doing whatever, we don't have the roof. So if we had someplace where we had moved to do, I think, we run pickleball, you know, and, but that, that costs multi-purpose. So could they be a bit more dedicated pickleballers to it? So there's, there's a million different things, we've done things with bounce houses, we've did, where we've brought in, and it's been. Kids' day, it's been great, we had a lot of kids, we had hot dog, we had lemonade, sell-in, and it was really a fun event. But we can only do so much, so, yes, so we're looking for additional space. And, and it makes sense for us, it makes sense for staying swampy. Now, we had, and Sean's touched on it, we've gone to other towns, and, and sometimes they're really good. They want us, because we, we also wanna add on to a, uh. An outdoor, so, good addition to our whole business, we run a soccer called FAC Soccer. So we have about. In spring, this past spring, we had about a hundred to a hundred and twenty kids participating. And we currently have a really good relationship with King State College from Zeraal Field. But it would be great to have our, our own field, that not, we still use King State, but to be able to go out and practice and things like that. And, and we service Manana High School, Manana Middle School. Because they have a lot of time to steal space indoor and outdoor, they come in with their track team to use our facility. We would love to have a bigger space where their track team and home vaulters could run, you know, and they could sprint. So there's a lot of use that would benefit the community, we'd like to keep it here, but yeah, so we're coming down saying, alright, maybe you guys can come along. In your thing, in your uh visitor, and you know. That whether it's a bandit sale, or whatever, you know, and that, that might work, or if we're town owned, or whatever. We just put it out to let you know that.
And you're just using tire warehouse building as an example, or that actually isn't running?
That's in the line.
It is, and do you have a room for an outdoor facility there too, or just addition to that building?
No, we, we, no, it has enough room.
There's room for outdoor?
Yeah, it has enough room to build an additional building plus an outdoor.
And a field?
Yeah.
Would, would make.
Best spot right there.
It, it, that is an ideal spot, convince him not to sell it, so that's, right. Uh, we're looking for about, I mean, that, is it twelve acres, that's fun?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, twelve acres really, it takes care of what we need for parking, for the facility, and a field. I mean, we looked at previous space, we looked at thirteen, and uh, two hundred.
Was it two hundred acres or something together?
Yeah, and, and for, we were thinking about bigger, more fields. But that's the location and all that, doesn't really serve what we're doing if we want to indoor, and it doesn't pair well with what we already have established.
Well, my record by brain, I can't think of any of my personal, that's the sale of Swanston.
The one they're talking about makes the most sense.
It does.
Right, so that would make a straight from this one here.
What I'm gonna do is, I'll just leave my card, and if anybody, and you've had that in your account.
I do.
I, I'll just leave this, and if anybody comes across anything, wants to shoot me an email with any ideas or anything like that.
There's only one building, but it might be too small for what you want to do, or you want to steal a tax transportation builder.
Right, so it doesn't have any land.
Doesn't have any land in this.
And that, you know, as, as much as the building. It's the land that's as much that we can build, you know, so I remember at one point. Wasn't there land for sale right along the, uh, the road into that airport? Has that been on?
So, PG Bill has a piece of property in there, it's probably. Seven acres, maybe six acres.
On the right, on, beyond the right.
Right, the web building, we're talking about. New web building.
No, 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 all talking about.
Yeah, that's what he's talking about.
I didn't afford it, yeah.
That's probably all by the city of Keen. Probably, but the city of Keen, and they won't, uh, you only lease from Keen.
Okay.
And you only do fifty year leases, and you don't want to get into that.
No. Yeah, we, we, we have an approach. So, but.
I can think of a lot of flash tracks that feel like that, but not for sale, right? People are all going to pharmacy, I'm sure they're gonna keep them.
I know some of the approaches of, uh, in between check the air grounds. And, 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 and.
In all those, in those field areas, there was a few tracks that seemed like there was very good moving around.
It is, yeah, it's very, yeah, that, that's industrial, too. That's the industrial park.
Yeah, tire warehouse would be ideal, but I don't think it's gonna be around much longer, it's like a cross activity. But we just want, I'd like to see a real estate spot, if you gave it more money, we'd love to show it to you. One, yeah.
So, I'm sorry, I would approach around the field, there's a selection here.
Yeah.
No, I mean, it might be worth talking to.
We would be wide open to that, I mean, we, so, I was involved in doing swamp backs, and so I have a little bit in it, in fact. We stood before, uh, Mike and Brandon, a few years ago, and we talked about Matt Brownfield. The June Swampbacks, uh, just because it's hard, right?
One of those suggestions, you could go out and see the secretary of school on the board. And just put on their agenda, go pop, take a beer, think of people around there.
But, a, and, and you guys don't, the color, right? Is that, is that town owned or what?
The brown field, the town owns the majority of, ground field is the majority of that property, but there is property around the school that the school system.
So, who owns the field itself?
I own the.
The field is the town. The town owns the field, top of the field, and then ground, so it's cheaper, we're talking about two different fields.
Ground field itself, entire property is ground field, and then in the corner of it, there's. That soccer school is, where, no, where color school is, there's a small area around the building, that belongs to the school system. I think all the fields and the tennis courts.
And right now, we're, and they're unsure of where the property might be, so they're gonna have to do research on it. Because like Scott was saying, five that belongs to school district and the other five belongs to the town.
Right.
And all belong to the town. School district is formed, cut, was beaten over to the school district.
And then they're, they're gonna be local.
That wouldn't solve your problem with the indoor golfing, you know, system or building or anything like that, but I don't think that buildings are gonna be built on that. They live there, it's just a field.
Right, I, I think we're getting a good loss on this, I'll see. Uh, so let, let us bring it, let's circle it back a bit, uh, love the idea, I as a representative of town. Great idea, hope so you guys succeed in town as well. Uh, tire warehouse locations, great location, I understand the problems that go along with it, uh, but we really can't recommend any properties other than. And we, we can't come to you with properties.
It's, that's the other weird, so we're not real estate agents.
Yeah, so if, if you have any ideas for anything in town, uh, you know, please let us know. Just that you're talking about, is there any, I don't know, maybe it's a study in Slatter.
Yeah, it might be, yeah, it might cost a regular Slatter.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. But, but what do you have in parcel? Hey, come back, hey, come back to us, we're happy to discuss. Great. Well, thank you.
And I'll just say, life's a business to you, like, life's a business to, for you, it's a service to the community, I could, you know, love to.
Yeah.
Some indoor options, growing up as a, a kid and all that, so please pursue it.
Yeah.
Whatever it is, but to everybody's point, it's up to you to do it and come up with your own business model.
Yeah.
Me and my five-year-old conversing.
Well, thank you so much.
Yes, thanks for coming in. Planning board schedule, that's the next up here, that's a scheduled meetings here. Any word, I guess, we all have a copy of it, probably right there. And it was changed for November for the, and December, yeah, November, December. So we've got me on the fourteenth and the twenty-first, so that would be the second and third, I believe.
The second and third week.
Second and third, yeah, and second and third of December, so. Everything else is pretty much the same, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's our new. Everybody fine with that?
Yeah.
Site plan modification, continuing discussion, I think we have a copy of the updated. Site plan modification form and checklist.
Thank you, everybody's.
Same comments in the consideration. Looks pretty good, I think, anyway.
Yeah.
Want me to read through it, or are we good with that? Uh, we'll have a public hearing, I'll read through it then, so I think we'll have a copy of it here.
Yeah.
Okay. Moving along, that should bring us down to. Oh, so the, yeah, we're just, just the site plan modifications in our site plans, that's what we're gonna add in there, we went over that last week. Uh, everybody probably had a chance to read it, or maybe not. And again, probably just like the, uh. The little checklist and form here and there, if everyone, if it looks good to everybody, then we'll have a public hearing, maybe at our next meeting. Both of these will be out of the public hearing, we can discuss it then, read through all, and decide, yes or no. And then that would, if we decide yes, then I go and deploy our site plan regulations after the public hearing. Sound good?
Yep.
Okay, so stick that on, look it over, make sure that nothing sticks out there, I guess. Let's see, we're to definitions, contractor bays and others, uh, probably gonna be. Like Adam had said, going through definitions to next month, paramount, and gonna add another one, probably clarify a few of them there.
Yep, um, so this is a, this is a broad discussion of what we want to have. I know, uh, the desire of this board is, assuming the word is well, it's to. Back with the ball back and things, what can call them, where really they need permitted, so on and so forth. Uh, before we get started, does anybody have, I know you guys have been sitting on this a lot longer than I have. Uh, so does anybody have suggestions, uh, anything they wanna bring up?
And that's about the contractor bay definition?
Kind of, yeah, and it needs to be, anything we could call besides.
But before we get started, I think Adam had to tell us a few other things that we could call out there, so, yeah, let's get into that, let's see what else. Oh, the bay is, it's good, but.
I like it, no, I like my very big, I think contractor bay is probably, you know, it's such a hot topic right now, I think it's a good, it's a good, uh, phrase. Uh, it could also be contracted facility, we've said, so many of them are big, I think that's still good. Uh, contracted garage, though like that's a bunch, uh, small day industrial spaces. Not sure about that, multi-tenant contracted facility, I'll dial that one second.
I like contractor bay the best, it's short.
Yep.
Pretty much to the point, and I agree.
Once we put a definition on it.
Yeah, yep, yes, I agree.
Cause it, yeah, definition you put on, I'll, you know, yeah, I see that it's contractor bay.
And so there's, there's a need for defining site activity, I think that there are some things we should keep in. I agree with that, uh, but this is one of those terms that we should define. Uh, we don't have to do that right now, because I don't know how to define this right now. Nobody has to find this specific use, at least not in the wider planning world. Uh, there's. There's multiple different definitions for a lot of different things, but we have to kind of combine them. So that takes a bit more work, to kind of make sure we have all, all our bases covered. Uh, before we get started on that though, let, let's go over where it should be permitted and where it should be under special exception.
Um, and let, let's go over what, what, what we're looking at, you know, just before we get into that, what we're looking at, because the one we did tonight here. Uh, yes, down in the mill now, you could say that's a contractor bay, but it really isn't a contractor bay, you know. If we could have a distinction between the two, a contractor bay could be something where there's more than one of them doing the same thing as mine, rather than a multi-tenant.
Yeah, that was my thought, I think these, these, uh, I think these are that much more.
You know, they're clustered together.
So is that, was one of your definitions contractor bay facility?
Yep, contractor bay, or you, you just add something, but whatever you decide.
Sex me implies a bunch.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Um, so here's what I was thinking, and that to be included in these, uh. Multi-tenant contractor facilities, contractor bays, what have you, uh, buildings occupied by two or more tenants that provide. This is a fair interpretation, provide needed services to the community. I wanna kind of play with the idea that these provide services that benefit the community somehow. Plumbers, uh, flooring, people, roofers, small contractors, and stuff like that. Uh, and these services could include, but are not limited to, uh, our guys right here. Uh, non automotive repair services, so anything that's not a car repair service. Uh, I think bike repair, jewelry, shoes, et cetera.
Motorcycle repair.
Well, I think, I think we can talk about, I think we can definitely have a motorcycle repair, uh, but definitely not parks, yeah, parks. Yeah, uh, small building contractors, equipment, storage, uh, that's gonna be a bit. I think that might roll into, uh, contractors, because they're gonna have a little storage, so.
Related to.
Yeah, they're related.
Yeah, cause yeah, anything related to business like we talked about tonight, they're, they're kinda, they're gonna need that stuff, but it's not warehouse.
Um, would it, would it be that it's housed in, inside versus outside?
That, I think it'd be both, or probably should be both, and those, well, depending on how the guy designs, you know, however the, the applicant comes in and says, well, we got outdoors. Doors up, yeah, they don't have to have it, but. Sales, it's enclosed, yeah.
It's all.
Yeah, security, they're gonna have the trucks and stuff, yeah.
Yeah, uh, and maybe light, light industry, talking about maybe putting together parts from separate pieces, uh, I know.
I don't know, let's keep it contractor bay, rather than getting into manufacturing and products and things like that, if we have other, definitely, you know, but if we're.
Yep.
Cause we're selling it, well, we're not selling it, but we're, we're explaining that it's, they help the community by providing services.
Yeah, and so I, I want to take that idea, these are services that benefit the town of Swanston and the surrounding areas. Contract, and it's, I, we just need to figure out how to word it, and I was combing through APA. And different definitions, different municipalities, there's really not a lot out there that fits this hyper-specific use case. One that is so needed, it's wanting, wanting, want this, so.
But with a general definition, like we're talking about here, yeah, probably be reclining that, and some good examples, pretty much. It'll put it into what we're trying to achieve, yes.
Be, be, because there, I, I see the relationship between what we did earlier with service establishment and contractor bay. Uh, for service establishment, uh, this is what I wrote, I, we were talking about it. Uh, business office slash staging of equipment and materials, tool storage, single business. I think for contractor bay, we're looking for primarily that in each bay.
I think we might wanna just make it a distinction as a facility.
Right.
Uh, rather than, yeah, cause what you're talking about, a single business, which is what we're, we've approved a bunch of those throughout the years. Uh, approved a bunch of those throughout the years, and that's what they do, but we're talking about a bunch of bays.
Right, but each bay in that facility, each bay in that facility might involve those same elements.
Yeah, so we could, you know, in our definition for the contractor bays, you know, they're doing probably same thing smaller ones they do that we approved for other. You know, like our, yeah, the other definition that we're talking about.
There's a dozen of them.
And there's an overlap there, they could, you know, if they fit into the mill complex down here, you could have some plumber or somebody working out there. Or even a roofer, I suppose, but that, the roofer problem will come out after the contractor bay, and then that plays down a smaller like down here.
So I, sorry, okay.
Sort of distinction course between saying contractor bay. Or bays. As to how we look at. How we're going to. Receive the application and the other thing that I'm related. Was thinking about. For the contractor bay or bays excluding any, uh, business that would be involved with gasoline. Like with, that a vehicle would have gasoline or motorcycles, something that would be combustible, I would think should be excluded in that. Well, I think that's where you were going. Uh, before that.
No, automotive, yeah.
And then you have sort of your cars that go outside too.
And maybe that's an approach is what are the things that we? Would found upon and not want to see.
Yeah.
Cause that might help us formulate how to word it.
If we do word it like that, then. I don't, if I were a client or if I were an app, I'd say, well, you know, that guy is doing flooring and he has combustible materials and cans. And I'm working on motorcycles and I got combustible material in cans like gasoline, but I can't have that in the can, you know. I, I'd be saying something like that. I'm just playing devil's advocate.
You're gonna have a combustible. Uh, or, uh, waxes and stuff like that.
It's all something that we use in other businesses as well.
A roofer store. Which is bringing anything in. There, but has or has potential containing gasoline.
Oh, so you're getting, exclude something with a gas tank.
Gas, yes, that's what.
So they could bring a motorcycle without a gas tank, you can work on it, it wouldn't be a problem. I don't know.
Or, or is it the repair element of it, you know, working a combustion engine, you know, all that versus storage.
I would like, I would like to see motorcycles. In good business, and only because we have such a huge community in Hampshire, and I think it would be. And you don't have the, like, vehicle repair, that, we do have. Garage, you know, in some of our, it's such an exception, but some are used, a garage and a repair garage and that type of thing, and it's made for vehicles and. When we have a site plan and it's floor, you know, we know where the vehicles can be stored outside and. Cause you have to, you can't work it on site.
What about the oil?
Yeah, that would be to scale of its launch time.
Small, it goes on oil and gas.
That's any business would be perfect.
Okay.
Yeah, there's small engine repair, that type of thing too, you know, cause there are, play with diet doing it now, small engine repair up there. And I'm sure there are other people working around and. It really, unless the fire department corrects me, you don't have a problem, you know, fires are at any of those, maybe really. They, towards they don't want to burn down themselves, so careful.
I'm having trouble with that, the first phrase of your definition, which was basically services that. That are important to.
I, I wrote it down as I was thinking about it, it's, and they're not saying we need to.
Okay, good, because I, I think that we need to, we would need to preface almost all the definitions with the same words, so, okay.
Uh, it was just trying to phrase it in a way to. Say that these services are kind of needed.
Sure.
Same, like, I, I, I don't know how to phrase that in more. Like everybody.
Yeah, I just.
I, I have another.
Would you require fire suppression, like sprinklers and something as early as possible?
Yeah, that's usually up the fire department and they may, yeah, they might want that.
And you require?
Only, I, if it's, if it's part of the code, I guess that they're.
There's, yeah, there's some state code and.
And they would probably want, you know, the fire department be in on it, cause they probably want to fire suppression walls, I don't know how many hours to burn through in between, cause they're separate businesses like that. And I would imagine that they'd design like that anyway, cause if you're an applicant or, or. General contractor, building on these, you want that kind of protection, so that it's burning replaced them.
So I think we, we got away from. Services that, uh, contractors are doing elsewhere, and they're using this to stage to. You know, store or whatever they need to do versus services that are now, that are now being done on site. When we start talking about engine repairs and things like that, and I think that we need to make a clear distinction, uh, between those two, because. Um. It, we might not want those onsite services to be done there.
It could be, I, I think it could be too, you know, as far as, if they're done safely and it's the. Special apartment, they'll, they'll sign off on it there. That, yeah, cause again, we're talking about small businesses, we're not, not going to a large, like, guy, I said, there's small businesses.
The size of each bay is going to be a limitation, right, so. Um, unless it's a contractor bay facility that is designed entirely for automotive repair, so there are, say, five bays for five guys who works on. Work on cars, which I guess we're, yeah, actually, I could share the list and whatnot, but, but the issue, I think. With, in addition to flammable materials, there's also storage of. The thing that they're working on, you know, so if it's a contractor bay facility that is for automotive, we have, you just have to have enough cars.
Yeah, we probably don't need, cause we already have the, the, um, what is it, repair garage, we have, so we wouldn't be.
So, so, you know, rebuilding car raters, that might happen.
That might be.
Um. Yeah, oil lender, go to your range. So I think, you know, I think we might be saved from some uses just by what. Typical scale, typical size.
So I think we specify, uh, some, something along those, no car repair, I, I still like to see small or something. That's, that's sort of thing.
That's, you know, even smelling repair, long line, things like that.
But car repair.
Uh, so, that probably has to be taken care of with, with examples, you know, because we need the broad definition of what this contractor bay facility or contractor bay is gonna be. Waiting for what?
For that definition.
For the definition of that, yeah.
The essence of saying contractor's base means that it's all one building, like, this is a big building and each. Contractor becomes a bay there, are they all the same size? Are they all working on similar things, or some of them will be crafty people, they're building furniture and some of them. And is that what it is, and they're gonna be working on site? Because when we first talked about this last year, I think it was last year or early this year. I thought initially that it was gonna be like something I've seen in other states where. The contractor has more machinery than he can house. So. He brings his stuff there off the job, if he's doing a job in Swansea, but his, it, his, uh. Central offices in Vermont or Massachusetts, then he could store his bulldozers and stuff in these bays. Because it sounded in the beginning like it was mostly for storage of contractors' materials. Not actually places for people to do work.
And it was, absolutely, it started out that way.
Yeah, and then people started talking at puppet hearings, like, we don't know who's gonna be working there, you know, and there will be all kinds of people landing out and. So I'm totally convinced as to what we should define it.
Me too, and that's why, that's why we're having this discussion first.
So office space, fabrication, I mean, it seems like everybody always says we're having offices.
It's small, I mean, they're gonna, everyone's gonna need a small, right, uh, I don't wanna get into offices, I think once you get to more of an office, it's. That's.
Don't think all their, I'm admitting I'm offices.
Yeah. Uh, I, I would really like to see onsite or. I, I'd like to see both options, either equipment storage for small contractors, or, you know, some onsite repair services. Just to give them flexibility, and I, I think it's important to have flexibility.
Yeah, I agree with that, just because it's, it's, uh, we aren't limiting it to a certain. Exactly, it's cause there are only so many plumbers, only so many electricians, yeah, carpenters, and they're gonna have this.
Yeah, and I, I was talking with the mixed use, uh, mixed use typically refers to both residential and commercial, and I, I think that's a whole separate. It's a whole simple thing, uh, so I, I don't know if we can classify these as mixed use, cause there's not a residential component to this.
I think you long man, the mixed use, go over that.
Oh, so typically when you refer to mixed use, it's referring to a mix of residential commercial, uh, so I, I don't think these will be classified as mixed use, cause that's not.
No.
You know, so, um. Contractor bay facility is gonna be something, you'll have to define it, and we'll have to determine where, which zone districts I can go.
Did you, yeah, I'm sorry, did you mention in small, the term small and in repair, so.
I had mentioned that, yeah.
That we have to define was, what extent is it small, are we talking about lawn mowers? Uh.
Anything shy of a viper B twelve.
Or chainsaws, things like that.
Yeah, and I suppose we can, but, you know, we're. When we get down to it, I wanted to find every single thing that we're doing here. You know, it's, that usually, that type of stuff is usually done at a meeting, everyone knows it. You know, you aren't gonna get a piece of engine in there, it's all that is falling in. So, you know, they're describing what they're doing, and the planning board doesn't think that that falls under small engine repair, and they deny them, then, yeah, they can go to ZVA or whatever. But, uh, let common sense do it rather than defining every single thing, but you know, we're not gonna. And if we limit it to that, and it leaves the board out of the decision process, some of that.
So, so my picture said everything is stored inside, is that your picture?
Depending on how they propose this.
Yeah, so.
Because for me, that's a big consideration.
It is, yeah, and valid consideration when they come to the site plan review, so whoever comes in for site plan review, they're gonna propose a space, they'll propose outdoor storage they want. And then we can discuss at that time, but, um, I, I don't know if we can. In the definition, I don't.
We can, we can design it for them, no, exactly, we can't do that, they, they'll bring in a site plan, a sliding board decides. What meets the legislation setbacks and all that type of stuff.
Yeah, they'll make a fish, and it, it. Might be that they propose outdoor storage, they try it, if it doesn't work, they can scale up, uh, I, I think it's important to leave it.
With the planning board denied, you know.
Exactly, yeah.
And, yeah, like that, so it's case by case basis, as it always is.
It depends on what space.
And with the land, yeah, yeah, and where.
Um, so.
It's messy.
Yeah, so let's, let's, let's think about that definition then, you could send that out, you know, your definition, you know, your stuff you've got written down there.
Yes.
And those territory shreds and.
Yes.
I forget which.
Exactly, um, I will, just briefly uncovered is permitted in special exception districts. Off the top of my head, permitted in business, commercial, industrial, industrial.
Oh, this use permitted in those areas, I got you, yeah, so you're saying permitted these bays, permitted, permitted in again, business or.
Commercial, industrial.
Or industrial. And industrial, and not in business one or business two.
Special exception in those two, and special exception in. Cause rule act probably on space, it would be meant, they could be a good location, so. I don't want to, I hope they say variance for those, um. In other districts, it would be a variance, and that's why we have.
Yeah. Yeah, but you're right, makes sense in those three districts. I'll start out.
Yeah. Well, no, I was, oh, yeah, they need to make sure.
Just gotta do mine though.
Uh, I, I didn't think, I never come up with anything concrete now, I want to get to see where everyone's at, and I will take the feedback and I will put together a definition that we can just destroy. Of you.
Yeah, definitely just send it to us and they'll come up. With it, they'll rip it apart and.
And, uh, I'll, I'll provide a few examples of other, of other similar terms, but again, it, these are still relatively new in concept.
Which is good, because that gives us, yeah, plenty of the files are on.
Right.
And what's good for the town here in Swansea, and it doesn't have to be overwhelming of a definition, it can be a short paragraph and good examples, I think, yeah.
So, so one, one thought is. You know, we've talked about contractor days initially, say, related to baseball road. It was the contractor and their employees that would be coming and going, um. But you're waving at me, um, that would be coming and going, but now we're talking about services where customers are coming in, you know. And I think once again, that's another distinction that we, you know, need to clarify.
I think as long as they're, they have the space. You know, they're, they're gonna come in with a proposal for a structure and will have certain uses that are permitted in a structure and work with space or works. It, I, I, I'm imagining these services to be low in daily customers, because. You might be dropping off of air and leaving, you might be going out to the jobs, I, I'm not imagining multiple customers.
Yeah, nothing, well, yeah, exactly, so.
But it might change the parking requirements for customer parking, things like that, you know, um, but also, we mean that, you know, maybe the. Contractor who, whomever is occupying that space will have somebody there, you know, more maybe full time even, right?
Yeah.
So those are all considerations and. Uh, you know, if we don't kind of come up with, if we're trying to. Maybe come up with one single definition, we might be more challenged when people come in front of us, right? So we might have to give it some thought, maybe we wanna. You know, come up with a second definition where there are customers coming and going, right? It's a little bit different in my.
I don't know if you wanna get too. I think we, I think maybe we should stick to one. Wholesale definition for contractor bay facility and.
It can be planning work and address it on an individual basis, as some people coming, and I'm just starting traffic codes, you know, things like that, traffic flow and all that, as we always do with site plans anyway. And yay or nay, or have them change it and come back and as we do.
I think, I think that'll get it, site, site layer will take care of it.
Yeah, but the more that's defined, the easier our job is, right, so I, I'm probably disagreeing with, with Adam a little bit on this one, uh, so.
The other thing about that is that. We will, we probably should consider them and treat them as multi tenants, all of them, because they're gonna be coming and going, it's not gonna be the same person in there when it's approved and five years, ten years from now.
Right.
So. They'll, once it's built, it'll have to be a multi tenant type of a situation, I would think.
The way we have, uh, like, so the way we have this structure then. Is it approved site plan comes in. After that approved site plan, other than what's approved, then both tenants will come in and get the multi tenants and meet and go through the multi tenant process. Um, I do think that there are changes to that process, like more. More information on the site plan, just highlight where, where your business is, stuff like that. But yes, yeah, the, the way we have it.
Has to do with that.
Yeah. Yeah, the way we have it instead of.
So if we do it, you know, treat it as a multi tenant, we probably will be doing. Then gotta make sure we don't. Uh. Single out these guys and have them more restricted than a regular multi tenant, we have a lot of multi tenants in our town. So we aren't gonna let these guys do such and such, yet they're under multi tenant, but we're gonna let these guys do it, we gotta be careful that we don't. We treat everybody fair, you know, it's their investment, they bought the property, uh, they're just trying to make money like anybody else is, so it's gotta be fair across the board, so they're probably.
Yeah.
All right, yeah, yeah, we'll take a look at definition and get something, come on with that then.
Yeah.
To go, I think. Going with what you're saying, that anytime a multi, approach and comes in with a proposal for multi tenant. Yeah, we treat them all the same. But. With, uh, the thought process too. Well, does this really fit? With what we wanna see in that area or.
Yeah, that's my idea, like you're talking about what areas should be allowing.
Yeah, so they're, they're used to lots of them, has to inform with the zone district and et cetera. Uh, which is why Grace, it was a good discussion, it's a, a good key up, we've had a few of those lately, here's like, the application seems up to our discussion. Uh. That would keep that.
I'm, I'm really wondering about using the rule ads.
Uh, special exception.
Special, even. Is, is that what, what we want the rule act to.
No, it is, I just brought it up because that doesn't exist.
And so, what else is in that rule leg, you know? And that's, I think, that's how I pick at that, because yes, so.
I go in there strictly for land purposes. Have a lot of land sometimes. And sometimes they are near commercial.
Well, this is, there's a reason why we do a rule act, uh. Area, and that's for. World development or farming development.
But we do have special exception because, in other words, I mean, you know.
I didn't do it pretty quick.
Sure, yeah.
Okay, so, um, housing uses, or you just notice.
Is there a special exception?
No, well, so, two family dwelling on. Three, four, five acres and less on public sewers, a special exception, detached. Is no longer. Accessory building was a special, if it's a really big accessory building. You know, thousand square, thousand square feet or greater, height of twenty five. You know, thousand square, thousand square feet or greater, height of twenty five feet. Farming as a business is a special exception. Um. Corporate office is a special exception, gift shop, antique shop, craft shop is a special exception, industrial park and manufactured use spec special sections. And then um, education or religious institution, club lodge, when the primary function is indoor, is a special exception. Bread and breakfast, bed and breakfast facility is a special exception. Um. Removal and processing of clay, sand, loam, brush, stone, sand, gravel for sale is a special exception. And recreation, conductivism, business, like a summer camp, golf, horse, country club, campground, stables, and this new.
There's a lot, yeah, there's a lot, I mean, you can build a hospital and hospitals are permitted use in rural.
Where's? Oh, yes, it is, yes, it is.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot on the special exception, only because it's a rural ag district and there's. Like you were saying, there's a lot of land there and sometimes people, they haven't lately, but a lot of buildings in there, I wouldn't have to talk about that thing.
But then it would have two roadblocks, it's had so many word in there.
So, but.
Yeah, right.
This.
Yeah, and I'm not sure village business district one is a good special exception either, because those two areas we kind of confined to already pretty established.
We didn't have that, did we have that?
We did, and I I want, so looking at the permitted uses in that in that district. Uh, manufacturer, so sorry, special exceptions, uh, you can have a rec facility, uh. Which is a pretty intense use, um, you can have service establishments there now, which we discussed that today, what Grace was doing was to try to do a great establishment. Uh, if we don't allow it as a special exception, you should probably think about changing that also to a special exception, so I'm just trying to stay consistent with what's already there.
Yeah, just keep in mind that these have the potential, looking like, you know, the um, storage. Units that we said we don't want anymore in this town, with with traffic, okay?
There's no.
So, you know, keep them, keep that in mind, because that's the last thing I wanna see personally under ten is more of these big long buildings. You know, um, that are hideous to look at, like frankly, and they take up so much space, at least. In in this case, the argument that, you know, each one is generating income, right, it's a good thing. Uh, but it's still that same look and feel.
Yeah, it is, but you can't, I mean, again, it goes down to private property, right, which we've talked about here before, and you know, they're investing in our community, they've bought that piece of property. And they wanna do those buildings that are on it, store building that's. If they wanna do it, and if it's our zoning, then it does it, but, yeah, they generate the taxes and they. Don't send any kids to school, so that's all that eighty percent probably of their taxes are going to something they never use. And it benefits the rest of us, because if they weren't there with that business, putting in that part of money into the school system, the rest of us have to make up that.
And businesses are good. And here's why, I would be asking, if if you read the definitions for village business one and two. And it should be a permitted use, not special exception, because it's a district intended to provide compact area which the commercial and business uses necessary to serve as the means of community and the function. Just reading that first sentence, it should be a permitted use, really, I mean, looking at village business one or two, the way they're written in the code now. I mean, if you don't allow them to at least be a special exception, we need to change that message.
And as you brought it before, a service establishment isn't allowed to use anyways, yes, it's gonna be a service establishment. It's gonna be a different form, but several kind of together, right?
Right, and I think we just need to stay consistent with what the code has, I think it's consistent. Before changing the rule, how to use, I again, I don't think there's enough space for available in. Right now, as it stands, in village business one or two, they've built these facilities, but who knows what's gonna happen ten, twenty years down the line. Uh, consistently, first, okay, with our public grid, how would this is hard to find. These fit that definition, it's easy, and I think we would need to change those definitions if we didn't allow it. Nothing's been official, et cetera.
Yeah, but if there's not a need, it could be built.
Exactly, yeah.
And right now, there's a surplus.
So.
It'll be smaller all the time anyway, so I think that's a good filter. Surplus of what?
Uh, when on the rental storage areas.
Oh.
Yeah, but that's probably gonna go away. These new buildings, final, yeah, like the assembly project up there, the one by that new fire station. And also built, there'll probably be some more need for it, because most of these developers are not able to store it for somebody who's within their apartment building.
Yeah.
And the people have no place to store them.
Yeah.
From where they're at.
All right, so first things first, definition.
Definitions, this is gonna be the first definition.
Yeah, we're not, we'll go from there.
You said there was one such facility. Was was fairly close, was it?
Didn't mean, oh, yeah, uh. It's just. To surrounding is one of our favorite.
I'd love to, you know, go there, a contractor's facility, yeah, I'd like to see one too.
It's it's a different, it's not quite the same as what you'd like. But I I think it fits some aspects.
A contractor vent facility?
Yeah.
I could drive a buyer with their vinegar.
With remount, electrical suppliers. That and more of those kind of buildings. Whereas that's all where uh, in Kane, where permission, or what do you call it? Subaru.
Yeah, okay.
Go down that road back there. Remount. Electrical, and then there's a bunch of other contractor.
Yeah.
It's a huge building, I used to wire.
Okay.
But they were all divided up, they were all different sizes, and like you were saying, the tenant part, now. Remount Electric, he only has like six spots, because he has a small counter inside for guys to come in and buy the stuff there.
Yeah.
But the back is all where.
The the best thing about our definitions is that one of the first points would be more than one, I think.
Yeah, more than, yeah, the facility.
Yeah, it could be two, and yeah, that'd be fine.
Yeah, I should.
Do it, we have a lot of. So. Uh, I can send out an email with something rough.
Yeah, do that.
That would be a good job, do that.
I get, I get shot, so it was establishment too, where you're.
I think that one is actually a bit easier, because APA doesn't.
I'm not sure if it's easier, if it's if it's a special exception in some of these zones, if you don't have.
If we have it, yeah, if we have that, a long time, a contractor bay facility, that's. We did hash this out the next.
There is contractor bay, contractor base.
Okay, then is there anything else for the good of the order? Did we cover it all?
I'll make a motion.
What would be that motion? Motion for adjournment?
Motion for adjournment.
Motion for adjournment by Mark, is there a second? Oh, second thing by Brandon, all in favor?
I.
All is both and we are adjourned, okay, so we'll take a look at the site plan modification and stuff, just to make sure it's what we're talking about.